I'm going to be in video starting, it's recording, so six o'clock comes, you can get us started.
It's six o'clock, but I'll wait for Dr. Meyer. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and gavel us in. Call the meeting to order. Our first action is to rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. We'll start by reading the district mission statement. Trusty Majors, would you like to read that?
Yeah, thank you. Lakeland Joint School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally all day, or excuse me, every day in all environments.
Thank you. Now I'll move on to patron input. Chrissy and Chelsea, did we receive any patron input this week?
We did not.
Okay. Moving on to action items. We have the consent agenda and the meetings from the previous minutes, or the minutes from the previous meeting, and HR items for the consent agenda. We can either approve them individually or as a block. Does anyone have any discussion on either item? Either items? Either of the items?
I do not.
I do on the minutes. I would like to note a correction on the fourth page, under Board Member Input for Future Agenda Items. The statement on the third sentence, well, the second sentence is Dr. Meyer suggested a new hour board workshop for the next board meeting. She also talked about having a mission statement for the Board of Trustees. That was actually trustee Grissom that made that statement, so that correction needs to be made. Does anybody have any other comments about the board meeting minutes? Okay. Were there any questions or comments regarding the HR memo?
I do. I, for one, I'm glad to see that our guest teacher pool seems to be growing. That's awesome.
Yes.
My other question would be if we have any exit interviews with any of these folks that are on here, or I saw the one resignation letter. I don't know if Brooke has anything to say with that, but.
Yeah, the other two resignations. Was anything provided for them?
We had one letter, yeah.
Okay.
She gives them the option every time. I think that she probably will give it to the board in the long term like she did before, but I could probably just follow up with her.
Sure.
Mine.
Okay.
Find out. I do know that she only could get one letter this time.
Okay.
So.
I could certainly see if we're coordinating or giving the letter, but new, new needle and aid.
Right, 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 right.
Okay.
Yeah, just curious.
I don't know who Jane Carr is, but I'm glad to see your last name.
I didn't know if you were related to her or not, but.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments? Would we like to approve the consent agenda in its entirety or break them apart?
I can move that we approve the consent agenda with the amendment to the meeting notes that you had made the meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. I.
I'd move to approve the HR and consent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Perfect. Hearing a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we have staff reports. Here's the first presentation is from Dr. Lynn Pazley of Betty Kiefer Elementary.
You'll first one there, and then this clipper should work too, if you want it.
Hopefully it works. So I'm Lynn Pazley. I'm the principal at Betty Kiefer. First and foremost, thank you guys for having me. Second, this is absolutely the best place to work. I know every other principal probably would say the same thing, but I promise you it is the absolute best place to work. So we have the most amazing staff. We have great parents. We have great kids. I invite any of you at any time to come in and just check it out. We just love our kids. We are a family. We say that all the time. We are such a community and it honestly is just an amazing place to be. So I love this place.
It was working. You can just use the arrow key forward.
Okay.
It was working, I promise.
Okay, academics, this is something I feel like we do really, really well. Last year I kind of showed you guys this and we were really just tracking. So in our K1, we have a 3, 4, and we have a 5, 6. We have looping, so which means is our kids stay with their teacher for two years. We do have some parameters in place, so like if parents feel like we need to have a child move for a variety of reasons, or if the teacher does, and we just need to kind of change up some of the dynamics. It's not a fixed situation. It gets pretty fluid, but we have noticed now, this is our second year, and even though we had that, you know, we were gone for three months of school, our kids are definitely being able to maintain. So prior to us looping, we saw kids coming in at the primary level for first and second. They were easily coming in and that fall IRI at 30%, 20%, sometimes 40%. And now we're just consistently seeing those numbers really high, so we're super proud of the fact that we're not seeing that regression in the summer. I definitely think it's the fact that we are connected, those parents are super connected to those teachers. We just were allowed to just continue that momentum of whatever we're doing, so that goes home with our parents over the summer. We're also seeing in our intermediate grades where we are definitely looping. So I think that really just speaks to the dedication of our teachers and our parents and our kids, just, you know, just continuing to look forwards. I'm really proud of those fall ISIP data pieces. Differentiation, this is something I feel like Betty Kiefer does really well. Again, here's our looping piece. Aside from the academic piece, there's a community piece that's just attached to that. The kids get to know each other super well. You already know those systems. You already know what's happening. You know what the teacher's mindset is. You know what the kids are, those dynamics. So that really helps us. In our third grade, we did this with sixth grade as well, but we no longer have sixth grade. We do a block schedule, which means we again make that pretty fluid, but one teacher is teaching math, one teacher teaches BLA. And this year we really have, instead of doing kind of a science, social studies block, we included writing in there. So we have really strong writing time. We have Data Day today, and we talked about how often are kids writing? Are they getting a paragraph every single day? Where's the instruction in that thing? So just feeling like we're being super intentional with those three subjects. And yes, we're still doing science and social studies, but it's through the lens of writing, so our kids are just getting more time with it, which is something we weren't doing really well. So I'm really proud of our third grade team for kind of stepping up with that. And then our fourth and fifth grade team has done, this is probably their fifth year now. So we call it fluid deficit specific. So for instance, you could be doing something with fractions and you're in fourth grade and you might be struggling with reducing, but you're struggling with renaming, and you're struggling with something different. And so each teacher will take a piece of fraction. So instead of just trying to teach to the middle, we're really being targeted. Every Friday, the teachers will get a quick little five-point assessment and then just, okay, who has what? So it's not really about tracking kids or, okay, this is a struggling math kid. It really is, if this child is struggling, what does this child need? Regardless if you're strong at math, old at math, great at math, it doesn't matter. It's just really targeted to what we're seeing. Instead of just like, whatever the book says, you're just following along with the next. It's really about being targeted with what the kids need. So those are kind of how we're addressing differentiation. And again, I think we're seeing the benefits in our ISIP and our IREDA. Something that we started this year, we're really, really academically strong, I feel like, and that's our focus all the time. But we were recognizing with our struggling learners that, for instance, if you do annotation with reading in first grade, maybe, you know, if you were, if an unknown word, you're reading something in an unknown word, maybe the first grade teachers were saying, okay, you put a box around it. But the second grade teachers were saying, well, we're gonna put a triangle around it. In third grade, you're saying, we're hiding it. Can we just recognize that consistency and not having that continuum as we move forward? Our struggling learners and even our not struggling learners, but mostly our struggling learners, we're really struggling with the ability to have to learn each teacher's style versus I'm just building upon that style and I can annotate and I know how to do that, so I can dive a little bit deeper, because I don't have to use that working memory piece to figure out what you're asking me or what a teacher is asking me. So this year, we decided to get really smart. And this is not me. This would definitely be my teachers. So K through sixth grade, we created a, this is our annotation doc, so everybody is using the same thing. So if you need to underline important facts, it's underlined. Instead of like, again, first grade says circle, second grade says something different. This has really helped us for our kids with that consistency. So whichever class you go to, if you flex, whatever you're doing, it's always the same thing. So we're definitely seeing some positives there in the sense of our kids just being able to build that momentum and being able to really focus on content versus structure and trying to figure out those pieces. The other thing we did. This is releasing.
It's, the mouse is near to the other TV one and makes it easier.
That would make sense why I'm checking. Why is it not going? So we did the same thing with editing, and today we did our Data Day and multiple grade levels just talked about this being really helpful. So again, when our kids are writing, if they're always trying to figure out, okay, what do I do if I have something wrong? What are those editing marks? And what is this teacher asking versus what this teacher is asking? If it's universal, then again, they're not having to spend time trying to interpret what we're doing. They can spend time on their content. So us going K through five on this has been super helpful. Last year, we spent the time building this, and this year we're finally implementing it. So we're feeling a lot of success with using those pieces, K through five. Now it's a habit. Okay. This, I just wanted to give. Let me go back. I wanted to kind of find it.
It's under that. Yeah.
Do I just exit from here? Oh. All this come here really fast.
I know.
I just wanted to give you guys kind of a sample of what we do. So today we met, I met with every grade level team the last two days. And it's really just our chance to just really talk about how are our kids doing? What do they need? What are they getting? We really try to look at, okay, here's our strategic kids. What we map out, so for reading, for instance, walk, let's walk through their whole entire day. What are they getting? When they go to this person, what does that look like? With their, you know, grade level teacher, what does this look like? So we're really being really intentional about what we're providing, making sure that we're not missing anything. We even have, like, we call it our outlier students that are really, really high kids. They're in first grade and they're reading, they're at the second grade level, or sometimes at the third grade level. We want every child to be challenged, so are we really focusing on making sure that we're challenging that kid regardless if you're high eating or low? So this is kind of just our structure. We get into, here's our instructions. So again, we really talk about what does that look like? What materials are we using? Is it working? Are we seeing that we're seeing the kids continue to, you know, go up? Or are we seeing, is it a curriculum issue? Is it, you know, we're not spending enough time on something? So we get two hours to just really dive into what we're doing from the instructional standpoint to make sure that we're making righteous decisions to help our kids. So this is just kind of a sample. We do all reading, math. So, and then we just take notes, you can kind of see things that we just kind of say, oh, we're gonna need to do a better job here, or we need to step up our being here. We're recognizing that we taught it some way and we need to change how we're teaching because the kids aren't getting it that way. So I just wanted to give you a sample of what a data day looks like. Here is our behavior focus, and really I should have labeled this our SEO focus. I think at Betty Kiefer, some may not be do really well, is we're really proactive instead of reactive. So if you can see, we have a lot of things in place at tier one, not as many at tier three, because our hope is that if we're providing this for all kids and making sure that we're equipping them with skills to handle those ever-flowing changes, student issues, homework issue, I didn't get breakfast that morning issues, all those kinds of things that come up in a day. We really try to teach them to utilize strategies so that they don't have to get here and then it's, you know, I'm escalated. So we put a lot of things in place. We have mentor time for our kids. We provide alternative recess. We do a lot of teach-tos. I would say we have the best counselor on the planet. She's amazing. And just, our said teacher is really, really good, and again, just really has a heart for kids. And so we're always looking at all of these systems and what can we have happen in the classroom. So it's just a team effort. So the language is all the same. We all talk about zones. We all do community meetings. We all talk about calming and de-escalation strategies, just really equipping kids with, okay, when you're frustrated, when your mom didn't pack the right lunch, or you left it at home, like, what does that look like? And then how do we help them problem solve it? So our goal is always to promote that independence, and so instead of always having an adult come in and rescue, how do we help you feel like you have sustainability and being able to problem solve your own issues? And in our opinion, that starts with tier one and just really helping them, you know, be independent. So I feel like that's something that Betty Kiefer does really well. And this is just our fun stuff. I won't make you guys watch it because they're super long, but we really just really tried to protect this year, just in light of everything that's happened. We still do our grade level competitions. We're still doing our monthly assemblies, but they're all remote, so we show the kids, but they have a great time. So, you know, later on, when you're step away, you want to kind of see some kids and smile and laugh and see some fun stuff happening. In our monthly assemblies, we always do some type of character building. So anyways, I just wanted you guys to see some of the fun stuff that's happening. Not just that that's a bolt of, you know, education and school and academics. Well, it's good to show that. I got to see that excellent paper. Okay. Okay, this one I'm gonna let you see. So this year we started, I have a sister principal and she's amazing. She started doing morning announcements. It was really funny because initially we thought we were gonna do it like once a week, and so she made the mistake of asking the staff, do you want it once a week? Do you want it every day? They said every day, so she says every single day. The kids love it, and we just kind of highlight birthdays and just do some of that fun stuff that everybody does. It's just a really fun way to start the morning. So I'll give you an example of one of her productions. For lunch today, we're happy conscious. Breakfast tomorrow, checks. It's just a little like the jokes. Please stand for the pledge. I just wanted you guys to get a sense of kids' happiness.
Thank you.
So this is the other piece. I just wanted to add, like, just against, back to our family and our community. Again, we've still tried to just keep some of the fun stuff. So three times a year, we, I end up having to dress up. And we give books to kids and we read to them. We give candy. That's our admin team. But the staff really dresses up. We had a turkey trot this year that was super fun. And just, again, trying to have school be school and make it as fun as we can and getting out of the box a little bit, recognizing that obviously we, you know, this is a pandemic and it's a different year, but still trying to make it the best it can be. So I just wanted to add those pieces. Here's our goals. Again, these are kind of our three mainstays. We always have these. We make little tweaks here and go, but it's just really about student achievement is huge. We really want our kids to do the absolute best they can and be really intentional about how we do that. And again, it's super important for us that our kids recognize that failing is part of learning, and so that, they're being okay with that. We don't talk a lot about grades. We don't talk a lot about assessments. We don't talk a lot about ISIPS or IRIs or any of that. It's just like, we want kids learning the standards and walking away feeling like we gave them the best education possible. I say all the time to my staff, I have three boys in the district, and I want every classroom at my school to be exactly what I want for my own kids, because I think that's what parents want too. So, and then we have our safe haven and then our positive community. And again, if we, we feel like if we match all three of those and that's what we work towards, then we've done our job. So. And then this is for you guys. Thanks for keeping us in school. Thanks for keeping us safe and in school. Happy holidays. I want to say thank you so much for keeping us safe. Thank you for keeping us in school.
So cute.
Well, I figured that I probably haven't heard a lot of thank you. I just thought. That was very thoughtful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Good job.
Yes.
Yeah, well done. Thank you for. It's an awesome place. Honestly, you guys, you come anytime and just walk the hall, see the kids. It's just an amazing place to be. You just can't help but smile when you walk through those doors. And there's three people that can attest that the kids have been there. So four people, sorry, Chrissy. So it just is a great place. It's a unique, unique school. And I know everyone will say that about their own school, but so.
Thank you. It looks like up next is the superintendent's report.
Well, I know I told you that it might not be back, but it is back. So we thought we were gonna have one meeting without it, but it is back. We have an updated winter 2020, 21 guidelines. And it's per the Stage Two Governor's Order, but they updated as of Monday, they updated again. It's in your plan, which I will open up now. And I have again, put it into the yellow, since we are in the yellow stage. I highlighted it in that bright yellow. And this is the only update I have. The Board of Trustees. I'm gonna make it bigger so people can see it. So the Board of Trustees has approved the following guidelines for all extracurricular activities, which include athletics, as well as band, choir, drama, speech debate, FFA, et cetera, activities. That the board had approved last time. That's the wording that I worked with Chairman Thompson to come up with. And then this is the actual link to the update as of Monday. That's the 40% of the gymnasium, social appropriate, social distancing. There's no consequences in the prior. I think we, that we had signed as non-employee.
Good job.
I just, every time we do a change, I feel like it's important for us to tell the public and for the board to be aware and approve.
Yes, definitely.
Questions on that?
So is it appropriate for me to start going to sporting events then?
Yeah, yeah. Up to 40%.
I'm dying.
That started, they started, I had asked the board to make sure that there wasn't, I mean, it was passed down the same, similar fashion as the last one, but I want to make sure there was no objections. And then it is, according to our board, it also is for FFA, band, choir. There's plays gonna be coming up, so.
I have a question. With respect to this being high school athletics, the junior highs, I know, also offer like wrestling and that sort of thing?
Yeah, it's for, it actually is for all.
Okay, perfect.
Even if you have middle level of sixth grade, it is still applied to that.
Perfect.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the first thing. The next thing is I'm gonna do a little bit of update on the charter school application. We have a teeny bit of miscommunication that I'm gonna work on from this point forward of making sure anytime there's applications, I I'm gonna talk to the entire board, not just the board chair about it. And we have Elevate North Academy, which is applied. It's actually a person that we had had before, visited the district and talked in the district. It's a great philosophy. But I did write something to the Commission for Charter Schools that it, what I'm worried about in this North Idaho is a supply and demand. The number of charter schools we have versus the number of students we have, I just think there might be, might be any charter heavy in North Idaho. It has a great philosophy though, and it does create more choice for students and families, which we are always in favor of. That hearing is going forward, and I think there is for at-risk. If you didn't have a chance to read through the entire thing, when she came and met with the districts, there's a tiny bit of competition with K-Tech at 11th and 12th, but it's gonna be designed for at-risk kids that qualify under the at-risk funding. So it would be like alternative school funded funding for 6th through 12th. But hands-on, CTE type of hands-on with airplane, airplanes and.
Sweet.
Yeah. That's one that's coming up. Then the Cooney Classical Academy did have an application, a petition in, which would affect our district. I did write back that it did not appear that the student enrollment would be targeting the same population that attends our public schools in Rafterm. So I didn't have an issue with that. It was also very much on a smaller, much smaller scale. But they did withdraw their application last week, so that's no longer in petition. They may be changing things and it may come back, and I will certainly then bring it to the entire board if I get that application again. And so any future petitions are gonna go to the school board and just to reference who's in charge of it. And by statute, they have to give us 30 days, but it's for the district, not the board. So she did clarify that she'd made a mistake in that email.
Okay.
Which Chairman Thompson and I received, that she, so from now on, we were, we're just make sure that there's better communication with that and ask that something be sec, at least have a second person that CCs on the emails. So that was a good learning opportunity for us moving forward. So any questions about that? And CFO Wallace will help me if you have any intricate questions. He's been dealing quite a bit. Our superintendent's group and our Idaho Association of School Administrators has been dealing with this quite a bit. But Brian is on, is a board member on IASBO, so he's deep into the discussions at the state level. The Governor's Budget Recommendations, which I'm sure you have either followed in Capitol Notes or in the paper or online, there's quite a hubbub, that there's proposed mid-year changes, again, are likely to go through, again, we can't speak for the legislature, but there is mid-year changes, where we would be changing, last year, remember, there was the five percent and then the one percent holdback this year, if this goes through, the areas, we're gonna unfreeze the career ladder, so, it will unfreeze all of that that has been frozen for this year, after we've already done our budgeting and already have everything, contracts and everything out, but they also will be adding advanced professional endorsement, Ms. Sexton linked in there, the criteria that you might wanna look at later, it's from the law, and she sits on a committee that really has done a lot of work with feature evaluations, and she and Brooke worked through an entire spreadsheet of every single employee and all the criteria that must meet, and we thought this was gonna start next call, and so now it might be happening a lot sooner, so it is putting, I just kinda want the Board to be aware that it is putting some new responsibilities, or just some shifting responsibilities that would go from next, that we're planning on looking at this summer that would be happening sooner, so, I will, the two of them have been working on this and have been in contact with the state, so we're, we're getting prepared. That's that one, also, we would reinstitute leadership premiums, according to the Governor's recommendation. There were some logistics we will be needing to work out, because, again, we did not have that, and there's a lot of stipulations, by law, there must be a minimum of nine hundred dollars, there's only certain areas, and if we're already midway or past through the year, we are not quite sure how this is gonna work yet, I brought it up today with the state, with the Governor's Office, with Gray Wilson, he will be speaking with our Region One Superintendent's Group tomorrow morning, so I might have more information for the Board after that call, that's a pretty big change, and there's some definite question marks around it. Then, the big one, reducing the discretionary funds, so we are initially, when Brian did the budget, the support unit was twenty-seven, five-five-six, this would go to twenty-one, seven-thirty per support unit. It equates, it could be approximately, yeah, I'm not gonna, but it would be right about one point five-six million for our district, if it was just that piece of it, so, we aren't, we aren't gonna freak out yet, we're not saying this is going to happen, it likely that it's happening, but it really is based on the legislature, and what's gonna move forward, we will just keep you apprised, I just wanted you to kinda have a heads up that this may be coming. So, any questions that Brian or I can answer for the Board on budgetary considerations?
At some point, can we get more in-depth explanation of exactly what those things are, you know, who, how are these affected?
Yes.
You know, throughout the district, who is it affecting, what is, I mean, are we talking, you know, staff, or programs, or both, or, you know, just a better understanding of what we might have to deal with?
So, as far as, it's, this isn't anything to do about any cutting staff or.
Right.
Changes that way, it's, at this point, it, it really looks like the Governor, if this goes through, the Governor says, here's your discretionary funds, which means you have a general fund pot of money, and then you say how it goes, and it may be shifted to saying you have to earmark it for these areas, which would then, after you've already done your budget for the year and then you get over halfway, it does make CFO Wallace's job harder, and he has been on the phone with several CFOs in other districts, what I would suggest, instead of just going into too much detail right now, unless people have questions for, for him, I, this is more of a heads up, and we are gonna know, as they meet every day and go forward, we will have more information, I don't want to presuppose anything's gonna happen and give you too much information and then backtrack, but I think the Board workshop coming up, that you're all gonna talk about tonight, that could, quite possibly, if we've moved more forward on this at the state level, I think that Brian and I would be able to work with the Board in a workshop format, would be really good to go a little bit.
Sure, yeah, okay.
If that meets.
Yep.
Great. So, again, this is, I'm gonna be on until we have the vote on March ninth, I've, Lisa and I finished every virtual staff presentation, we had the reported Emmy Award-winning eighteen-minute levy presentation, that every staff member watched, I'm sure the entire thing, and they loved it. And, so, that's on the website, as are several pieces of it broken up, but then we did a question and answer with every staff person, so people had submitted questions and we went through that, so that, every, as of yesterday, every staff person had the opportunity to do that with us. We have every day updating our link with further information, I'm trying to have two to three informational pieces that are added every week, to keep it refreshed and keep new things coming that people have asked us for, interested in our, at questions that we're receiving, that we're trying to address, only from the patrons and the parents. So, our info mailer is getting the info, is getting, went to the printers yesterday, that will be mailed out, so it should be by, hopefully by the end of the week, or by the beginning of next week, for sure, so that will be going out, I put it in there for the Board, you, I did email Skylar, you saw with the tax bill comparison with Mr. Wallace's actual bill and his video, which we've got a lot of, he's actually really good on video, and we've got a lot of compliments, so, other districts are now actually gonna take his script and do their own, or just use his, so, that's good, I think that's good kudos for our district. And then, putting what we did, the first one, community presentations that we're still looking for right now, oops, you just did the same thing one, community presentations until that public is overridden, overwrote, overridden, overridden, I always say the wrong word for that, that, we're gonna keep to under ten until that time, and consistent, this is my new saying, consistent communication, if we have an educated citizenry, when they go to vote, it will increase voter turnout, I just feel like we need to increase, with only seventeen percent of parents voting, we need, our thing has to be, let's educate people, give people the facts, and then they make their own decision, but let's get the voter turnout up this year, that's our goal, consistent communication will create an educated citizen, to increase voter turnout.
I have a question. In this, in thinking of the Governor's Order, there were two exceptions to the order, faith-based exceptions and political exceptions, and voting on something sort of political, I wonder if community share, because it is something to do with voting and political, it's gonna be on a ballot?
Yeah.
If that gives us the ability to have more than ten people.
I'm gonna ask that tomorrow morning, because that's a really big question, I'm gonna be on the phone with the Governor's Office tomorrow, so I'm gonna ask that, that's a great way to look at it.
Yeah.
I like it.
Yeah.
I'll ask. This is a highlight celebration, I was gonna wait, but I just couldn't, it came out the other day. I'm gonna, I do an annual presentation to the Board in February, saying the graduation rate, and then give you a surrounding districts and everything, you know, kinda give you last year's, this year's growth. Oh my gosh, this is so wonderful, we're at ninety-seven, ninety-six point seven through a pandemic, it's like absolutely phenomenal, I can tell you it's higher than surrounding districts, and, which I'll give you next month, but Lakeland High School's ninety-seven point five, Timberlake ninety-seven point two, Mountain View is at eighty-seven percent, and once, I also have this five-year cohort, these are four-year cohorts, when I show you the five-year cohorts, which at-risk kids are part of a five-year, you're gonna be blown away, but I'll give you the presentation next week, I just, next meeting, but I just couldn't wait to tell them that, so that's awesome.
That is great.
That is great.
This is also a really big thing for the public to know, because this is our report card, how many people do we get through their thirteen years here and graduate in our district? This is absolutely phenomenal, so, it really has to do with the wonderful staff that we have.
Right.
So, it is really awesome. Okay, one more thing in our, in the superintendent's report, and this will be going out to the public, and I'm just send, this is in your Board package, but I have a letter that's going out this weekend to the patrons, we're at the mid-year, which means that I do the accountability report on their levy dollars, and so this is just a brief highlight, I would welcome any suggestions you have when you look at it, as we're going through it today. So, this is the, I'm not gonna read this to you, you can read it, but this is really my letter to the patrons, where I explain any sort of conditions, if you remember last June, when I did the end of the year accountability report, just congratulating that we could keep all of our programs and our instructional integrity, based on going through the COVID, that we kept everything, we have had a few changes we've had to make this year with the six percent holdback and social distancing, you already know about the specials at the elementary, and some other small class sizes, preps at the end of the day, all of those types of things, but, one thing I really highlighted in here is, we have had a few things that have had to be done pause, but our district developed, we really met educated students where they were at, and we let those families have, do you wanna be online, do you wanna be in person, but we are the only school district in the area that's been in person, all of the school, five days a week, all year, and the statistics are proving that that was, the Board made the right decision, and I just feel like the only reason we could do it is just based on everyone working together, so. Our goal was always to be academically rigorous, safe and supportive environment, and then fiscally conservative approach, which I feel we've done a really good job with that, trustee major already read our mission statement, so it remains the same no matter what, accountability, the taxpayer, these are all the ways the taxpayers can show that we're accountable, they can come listen to Brian's budget presentation at the first meeting, or they can listen on Zoom, we have two times a year accountability reports, we do surveys, strong return on investment, so these are all ways that we're accountable to the patrons, these are all the ways that we have collected their information, so I'm giving the results back out to the patrons in the accountability report, the spring annual state surveys for the accreditation that the state does, we don't show those out because they're on the report card on the website, they're available for each school, but it's not a district one, so. Again, I already did the report with you and the presentation on the parent survey, but I think it's important in the accountability report that people remember what they really like most about this district, nearly fifty percent, is the teachers and the staff, so, it's important that we remind the public that we're really being, you know, we're accountable to the patrons, look at what you like, this is such a great staff, and overall, in the district, we have over eighty-six percent parent satisfaction level, this is, remember, the one from extremely dissatisfied up to fives, and this was in October, when we were first just starting, there was definitely polarized opinions about how being in yellow, five days a week, you know, masks were recommended when social distancing could not be maintained, so I feel like this is even skewed a little bit differently, like, you know, but it's still super positive, in the middle of the start of a pandemic and us figuring it out, so I'm super pleased with that.
And nobody skipped that question, they all answered it.
Yes, that's true, so your taxpayer dollars, this is the last year, we'll make it clear to the public, is the last year of our two-year instructional levy, hence why we're going for a vote on March, the reports include, the report includes projects and programs maintained, ones that we've completed, and anything that's been paused, which we do have this year, this year, instead of listing them out, I did a spreadsheet, and then Chrissy today put them into three different sheets, it was too long, obviously, and people won't be able to see it, but when you have, when I share out the document, it will be one long document for people to look at, and I put it into two groups, the project or the program is completed or maintained through June, I want them to know what we completed and stayed in place to the end of the year, and then, based on the six percent holdback, what things were paused and we did not continue, I wanna be really transparent with the voters, these are things that we did not continue, so that they are saying, wait, why did we do that, why didn't we do that, so, we didn't maintain the same staffing levels, that's a blank there, we did not maintain the elementary advanced learning program, it will go back into effect next year, based on, you know, once we have full funding, that will go back into effect. All of these things were in place, the SRO program in Rafterm, you know, we have the two armed guards, but that program was put on pause, the district safety task force team is working on that piece, all these other things are in, still in place. The field trips were really, you know, a bus thing, a COVID thing, a social distancing thing, plus also funding, so those were put on hold, on pause, the activity buses were on pause, we talked about that as a district, those were that second bus run that runs after people have done an activity or stayed active for after-school help. And everything else was kept in place, so I think we did a pretty good job of the programs, the, I think where the biggest piece that people felt was the staffing and having those holdbacks this year. So, that, moving forward, we wanna maintain transparency, continue to gather input from our stakeholders, we want to make sure that people still have a voice and continue to gather feedback from them, I think it's really helped the Board to have, make informed decisions to have that information, and then, again, back to our mission, is we will always be maximizing student learning for each, every individual child. So, then they can ask me questions, the Board certainly can ask me questions, but this would be going to the public, for them to feel like we're continuing out with our transparency and accountability reports, so does the Board have any questions?
Nope.
I was gonna say, when you told them about the budget, you said first meeting, maybe delete the Tuesday, because I know what kind of, in blocks of whether it's Tuesday or Thursday, and I kinda got some, you know, changed our board meetings from Tuesday to Thursday.
Except is that a reflection that last year, we did Tuesdays, or is it for this year, we're doing?
Well, this is the letter she's sending out right there, Gordon.
Thank you. I, yeah.
And I don't even know.
I, I think I'll just put schedule on the website, so that I'm on there, I will change that.
Yeah.
Thank you if you're not.
Send it one way or the other.
Absolutely, I, I think I'll change it and just say, schedule available on website, under Board. Okay, yeah, that's good.
Good catch.
Yes, good.
Yeah.
Hey, any other, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mer. That moves us into discussion items. We have a first read on the update to Policy 1500 regarding Board members. Let's see here. This, I believe, was a statute change, is that correct? Yeah, there was some statute modifications, so we added language with respect to what the statute required. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the proposed changes?
None on my end.
Okay. We would move on then to the first read of the update to Policy 3300 for drug-free school zones. This also was a statute change, I believe?
Statute change and the addition of tobacco products.
Yeah.
Being added underneath the definition. Which is also statute change.
Does anyone have any comments or questions regarding the suggested changes to the policy?
I think it looks great.
Okay. Next, four discussion items, we have the Board Meeting Schedule, it's kinda clumped together, Board Meeting Schedule, Agenda Layout, Workshop Dates and Times, there's a whole bunch of items in there. Last Board Meeting, we did agree to change the Board Meetings to Thursdays, and it would have been a good time to talk about whether or not five o'clock works for everybody. As far as my understanding is, we all have, the three females have a fairly flexible As far as my understanding is, we all have, the three females have a fairly flexible schedule, but you have a committed time schedule with your employer. And I know that sometimes our board meetings run long, and we have the option of possibly starting the board meetings earlier. I didn't know if that would work for your schedule or study.
Yeah, absolutely. You tell us.
After 9 o'clock, the board must be very flexible.
Okay, okay. Good to know, good to know. So I figure it's, it's worth a discussion, and then we can implement. Chrissy, would we need to implement an action item at the next agenda to alter the times? Or can we do that today?
We built that into this agenda and action items.
Oh, okay, perfect.
So it's down there in the.
Okay, good. Because it is a concern of mine that, I mean, we want to, we want to be efficient, but it's, it's not good when we're like, can't handle it. On top of that, I also would like to see us move workshops to not be right before the board meeting. So it would mean, like, possibly during the week, instead of doing everything back-to-back, just do one on a Tuesday and the meeting on a Thursday. Because I struggle with getting fed so much information and then going into a board meeting and having to apply what I've just been fed in such a short amount of time to make decisions. So I think it's best first to have the workshop before, like, literally way before the board meeting, and then come into the board meeting with a better perspective, better position to ask the appropriate questions, to make the right decisions. So with those two ideas in mind, what time would we like to consider changing the board meetings to?
I mean, personally, you know, you, you want constituents to be able to attend.
Correct.
So I don't think that moving it any sooner than four would be, would be really appropriate because a lot of people, not just us.
Right.
Because it has to be a public meeting.
Correct, that is correct.
I mean, I don't think.
And I don't want to create a.
I don't know what you guys are.
Well, for me, I don't want to create a situation where we're giving the presumption that we're trying to exclude people, but I am also aware that, like, Panhandle Health District, I believe the county commissioners now hold their board meetings at noon. I'm not for that. I'm just saying, it doesn't seem that there is a concern with bumping the time up for those that, meetings that require public involvement. The one thing that I didn't really consider is, if we did bump to like four, Dr. Meyer, how would that impact your schedule or Mr. Wallace's schedule?
We're, we're fine with that.
Okay, okay.
We can be available anytime.
Okay.
To do it on Thursdays.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
What are you guys' impression?
Well, four sounds great, however, going back to, you know, most of our parents are working parents, I think five o'clock, I think, is probably, in my opinion, that cut off time for anything earlier than that. And I understand others have made the decision to have in the middle of the day, but we really do exclude a lot of people, and we tend to have a very involved community.
True.
So that's, that's the only thing I would be concerned about, is that if we went any earlier than five o'clock, that there might be too much of an exclusion for the participation.
Okay.
Well, and maybe we set them at five o'clock, and then if we have an executive session scheduled like.
Earlier.
For example, today, who could have started at four, executive session doesn't really apply.
Right, right.
So maybe that's the time that we go with, and then we schedule our executive before, maybe if we have to. That way it doesn't, like, you know, stretch the meeting out.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm good with that, yeah. And we can do that, right? Chrissy, just pull the executive sessions out of the regular meetings.
Oh, yeah.
Do them beforehand, and then at least we would be getting all of that done.
Thoughts, Debbie?
I, I wonder how many people, so we have a lot of, we have people watch on Zoom. I wonder if.
Do you want to know how many are on tonight?
Oh, it's three. So I don't know, I'm thinking during the day. I mean, are people really, are they coming to watch it later? Or, because what participation can they really have? Really, I mean, there's not much they can participate in.
It's true.
Anyway, right? So I guess my, I'm just throwing this out here as a thought, just so we can all talk about this. So if we record it and they can come and watch it later, really, what does it matter? Because I guess it does matter when people want to come and sit in the audience, and that hasn't happened for a long time. So I'm just answering my own question here, in, in talking about it. So I guess that would be the concern, if people wanted to actually come to the meeting and voice their opinion and have their input, that would impede them from doing that. So maybe, maybe my thoughts of having it early in the day aren't. You know, maybe that's not a good idea, like, like you had mentioned.
Yeah.
Because hopefully, this won't go on forever.
It won't.
Well, yeah, it's been almost a year now, I'm starting to wonder, is this the new normal?
Well, Rob, you having the longest experience as a sitting board member, what is your impression of patron participation as far as sitting in the meetings?
Oh, I will say that we've, we've had more participation prior to the pandemic. The, that previous six months, we had more participation.
Okay.
So I think that would be a concern.
Okay.
And I think that the five o'clock is probably prudent, because we will get past the pandemic, we will have larger gatherings, and we will have participation here.
Okay.
So I mean, really, but I do think that scheduling the executive sessions beforehand is probably going to help.
Okay, so then, can we agree that it would be who has to change executive sessions to the start of the meeting, so that we can start earlier and then go right into the meeting so that we're not here.
If that works for your guys' schedule, definitely works for mine.
Absolutely.
Okay, that sounds good.
And then to your point about the workshops, you know, for me, it doesn't make any difference. I have a ten minutes one. We have, you know, some may have a little more of a drive, so, you know. I have my simple schedule, and we're close.
I just don't like being fed so much information all at once and not being able to process.
Makes my brain tired. Like, I just go home, like, oh my gosh, this is so much. I'm with you. And it makes it hard to make clear, concise decisions and have clear, concise discussions when I'm so overloaded. So I do like the idea of breaking them up, because it makes it so that I'm fresher and can keep up and keep my snarkiness on, on cue.
Perfect. Okay, that makes me happy, because I just think that it would, it would allow us to become more productive and more cohesive when we're not just cramming so much in on one day. Now, at the last board meeting, it was tossed out there that we, as a board, should take the time to develop a mission statement, some goals, et cetera, which, that should be done, I would think, in a workshop forum, correct? Okay, so we would want to schedule a workshop for that. So, no, 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 that's okay. I just want to make sure y'all hear that, that, how soon would we like to put that on the agenda? Yes, Dr. Meyer?
I want to make sure that if we can do that, the sooner the better is great. With me, I want to make sure we don't lose sight of that budget workshop, because that was really important.
That's next Tuesday.
Before.
Yeah, way before.
Yeah. Because we want, and we need to follow up and have questions and stuff.
Correct.
And it's just a crazy kind of year, so I want to make sure we don't, we don't overwhelm you where somebody can't come to the budget workshop, one of the board members.
Right, right.
So, and when is the budget workshop?
I believe it's the ninth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm good with that, too, the, the sooner the better that we can get rolling on the new year with those things. Obviously, we have to, it would either have to be next week sometime, or following week.
Okay, well, in thinking about the workshops, though, with respect to the public being involved with that as well, are we thinking of keeping those also at the 5:00 time? Or can we consider doing them earlier? Or?
By statute, the only ones that the public has to be involved in is the budget and curriculum. Any other workshop, we're not statutorily obligated to have public input or participation.
Okay, so then running the curricula, or the, sorry, little sleep myself. The, our regular workshops that we're just trying to get things hammered out, we could, yeah, we could do that at, say, like, a 3:00 or earlier, as long as the board meeting was, yeah, lunch would be perfect.
Yeah.
As long as this.
I can check right now.
The room was open.
I can check right now.
Sure. What about the 2nd of February? It'd be next Tuesday.
It's busy.
Oh, go ahead. What do you say? Would that not work for you, Rob?
No, it's my, my daughter's birthday.
Okay.
Because I talked with your aunt's mom, so we're planning a big to-do Tuesday. That would be the only.
How about Wednesday? Go to the next day or?
Sure. Is there anything within the next week where the conference room is open that might work?
It's most open on Thursday, the 4th.
Okay.
And you could also do the afternoon of Wednesday, the 3rd, if you wanted to.
Okay.
Like afternoon, noon and afternoon.
Okay.
I'm good with Thursday.
I would not be here Thursday, but.
Okay.
Okay, so not a worry.
So Wednesday, sounds like we.
Would Wednesday work for you? Okay, could we do Wednesday at 3:00?
Are we going to put that on the new board calendar?
Yes.
Yeah, we can put it on the calendar right now. And then the board trustees. Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Would you like Ms. Sexton and I to facilitate that, like we talked about, or did you have a different process you want to use? We talked about showing you how we did it with the, everyone's input and doing the funneling activities, but we're, so we're available 5:00, let me check.
Trustee Kristen, what do you think? Okay. Okay, sure. If you guys are available, that would be great.
Yeah, we would like to, and then you could always refine it or do further after that, but that would be a good starting the funding spot.
Yeah.
So Wednesday at 3:00?
Wednesday.
Yeah, I'll put a meeting request in the board calendar to be well.
Perfect, thank you. The budget workshop is coming the following week.
Yes.
And then we wanted to do a workshop regarding what we have learned through ISBA training, through the convention, the open meeting law training, et cetera. When would that work for everyone to do?
Are we participating, attending on the virtual Day on the Hill?
Oh, yeah. I, that's another part of my discussion thing.
So I'm wondering if we should just sort of do the Day on the Hill, and then just sort of put it all together and have a meeting of the minds after we participate in both of those.
Yes, because Day on the Hill is coming, and it's my understanding that we can attend, well, it's, attendance is virtual, and it's a, it's a fairly minimal fee for all of, I mean, it's like a one, one-shot does-all fee. So are we in a consensus that we would like to do Day on the Hill?
Yes.
Okay.
Chairman Thompson, are you talking about making a year and doing a virtual session? Or?
No.
Okay.
I was just talking about doing the virtual session, yeah. Not a worry. Okay, yes.
So if that's the.
February.
February, then. Do we want to do 17th, which would be a Wednesday, or what are you guys?
I need to figure out how to get to that calendar thing, because I don't have Google open, so.
This is February.
Open the email thing.
So February 15th is a Monday?
Oh, you gave me a calendar thing. I don't know if it's.
Yeah, that's the Day on the Hill.
That's what that is.
Yep, yep, and that's on our calendar.
Okay.
And then, so then we have basically nothing the rest of the week until, you know, the following week is our optional board meeting, so.
I may be out of town now, last week in February.
Okay.
I hope not.
So you're going somewhere more.
Not that I don't like y'all, but Mexico's calling my name. My husband can get his passport in time, my puppy.
So we should stick with the same week as the board meeting? Day on the Hill?
Oh, Day on the Hill.
We would probably leave like on a Wednesday or Thursday, so Monday or Tuesday would work on that 23rd, 22nd, 23rd? Is that what you're talking about?
Or, or just staying in the same week of the 15th through the 19th?
Sure.
If that would be the one. So do the.
Can you give me the date again?
Yeah, so the 15th of February is the Day on the Hill session. We would participate at our offices, our homes, wherever we will be, but then are we wanting to come back together here to share information of what we learned for the Day on the Hill and ISBA's other?
It would be, I would think that would be the best time to just sort of culminate everything we've recently learned.
On a same day?
No, 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 not on the Day on the Hill day, but. Are you kidding me? My little brain would not work, so.
So what is the board group availability look like for that week? We'll say Wednesday or Thursday? Or Thursday's tight for you for the afternoon, or no?
I, I already talked.
Okay.
My person.
So it's really full on Tuesday.
Okay.
Wednesday, we can certainly have it available, we have a building at the meeting, but we've been having individuals socially distance, and having table spread out in gymnasiums, so you can certainly, Wednesday, all day, you could have this anytime.
Okay. So should we do Wednesday, the 17th? Is that sound playing for you guys?
Sure.
It gives you a day of.
Anytime after about 11:00.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm good on the Wednesday, anytime that works for you guys. You two, anytime after 11:00.
Well, you guys.
I would, I'd like to do it around 3:00.
3:00, okay.
Yeah. It was Tuesday, 17th, okay. And then, oh, I have to back over here. Got it?
Just so we have the right, because they'll say no board action when they're posting.
Correct.
Make sure I get this right, it's Day on the Hill and ISBA convention debrief, no sharing. Yes, is that correct?
Yes.
And open meeting law, just in case there's anything we haven't brought out yet. The other item under the 1.3 is the agenda layout. Our agenda does something that drives me crazy, wherein we are putting on the action item the actual motion that we're presenting. It's my knowledge and understanding that that's really not how it should be. The action item should actually be that, an item that we discuss, and then we create the motion at the meeting, and whoever wants to bring the motion brings it out. There are a few samples up on the thing that I can show you guys. I personally would like to change the agenda, but if everybody else is in favor of just keeping with the status quo, I can also respect that, but it is something that has been kind of a, a thing for me. Because I feel like what we're doing in providing the motion, showing the public that we're not thinking about it. This is just what we have to vote on, is what the motion is already written out for us. It's always been my understanding that the action item is exactly that, an item that you discuss. And if action needs to be taken regarding it, then it is made. So I was supposed to provide samples for y'all that I was thinking about, and I was remiss in doing that, so.
My only concern with that is that as a new person, sometimes it becomes very overwhelming when you feel like it's your turn. When you're, when you're thinking about making the motion, you get nervous.
Right.
And then you can't think about what you're trying to say. And so it's, it is nice to have something there to look at.
Okay.
So maybe if we kind of talked about that and maybe, you know, the person who's thinking of right, of, of what it would be, we kind of like talk about it for the newbies.
Okay.
Because we're obviously going to be getting somebody new here soon.
Yes.
And so I like that just in terms of kind of letting me know, okay, this is what, a primer, right? Kind of a primer on what.
This is how you would present.
Although, I think that what you're saying is definitely true, that it does give the impression that we are just doing what we're told, instead of coming up with our own ideas and discussion and making decisions together as a board, instead of having this all pre-planned out.
Right.
Ahead of time. So I think that you're right. I think that if we change it, it'd be really great to kind of help little newbies like me figure out.
It's okay, I still read the paper because I don't know all the words.
No, I think it's great. I think it's a really great idea. I can see why these are here, though. You know, I, you know, I can see where this would be a comfort.
Okay. Rob?
I mean, I think it's, you know, we determine what is on the agenda. That's posted to the people that were making the comments of this, so they, is that? Are we, should we have, you know, like, to me, that would be like a bullet point, this is what we're talking about. We discuss it and then we either approve or deny this. This will determine by the chair and the, you know.
The superintendent.
The superintendent or a couple of the trustees. And it's a specific that we put in, even though it seems like can, to me, it's just, those are the things we.
Organization, kind of, yeah.
Need to discuss. And this is the action, it's either gonna be, we're either gonna be, you know, for it or against it. But this was brought up, this was a point that we needed.
Right.
I, I, sometimes I think, you know, I kind of feel like maybe the, you know, the cart comes for the horse in the fact that we have a motion before we, it used to be even worse.
Oh, no, don't say that.
Yeah, and I first started, it was like, whoa, do we even get to talk about it?
Right.
Yeah, you always.
Well, I thought it was. But I mean, it's just, it just, you know.
Right.
Well, the struggle I have is there have been a few times that the motion's been written, and that's what we have to say, but that's not what I want to motion. And I can't just, and, and it has happened to me because it's like, I don't like how that's worded. This is what I wanted to say. And it's like, well, this is what's on the agenda, so this is your motion. So that's, that removes the responsibility of us creating the motion when it's already there. And if you look at the fact that, you know, when we go to an action item for the consent agenda, we've got consent agenda and the items listed below that, then we make the motion to approve or deny to accept the consent agenda. So we, on one segment, do it, in my opinion, appropriately. But on the other ones, we're coming up with the motions before we've even discussed. I mean, and it's, any motion is to either approve, deny, or table. I mean, that's what we can do with whatever it is we need to talk about. But there have been a few times that because of the way it was worded, you have to go through a whole bunch of processes to not do it the way it's been worded.
But haven't we, so this is, in my opinion, this is a starting point. Haven't we, in discussion, determined that, you know, we need to amend that? You know, because, you know, based on our discussion, we figure out that maybe the right motion is this. And don't, I mean, I guess I would speak to Chrissy, can we amend the motion as we made it? I mean, I guess that's.
Well, what we have to do is, we have to make the motion that's on here, then we have to amend it. So it's, it's because, well, and I guess that kind of segues into chairman responsibilities. Because as a chairman, I, all I am to do is lead this meeting and keep the troops together, so to speak. I don't have any other authority that's outside of my responsibility as a trustee that's equal to the remainder. So I guess if you intend to give me the authority to make motions, then that's one thing, but I am not gonna assume that I have any authority outside the ability to lead the meeting and, you know, be accountable to you folks. So maybe that's, because I do want to discuss that as another thing on here, is the fact that I'm not going to assume any authority that's outside of my scope as a trustee. Because all, all I'm called to do is, as the chairperson, is lead the meeting and any other duties that are given to me. So none have been given to me, so I'm not assuming anything.
Well, don't you go for, don't you need?
I mean, with the chair to discuss.
But to.
Or super, superintendent. Yes, to, to create the agenda.
So your, your changes, how would it look? I mean, would there be, you know?
Can you go to Torley's agenda? Wasn't that up there? Where was the one next to?
Torley, no, I have Boise School. Wrong people, I have Boise Schools up, I have on the list.
What is that to you?
So, Rob, or Chrissy, I have to say, important thing is that we're making action and information. So you can see here how Lewiston District just lists it, and they say information or action. And this is, this is Blaine County. Same thing, they just kind of list the items and then above, they like, what is action? And what then?
So you're just giving the subject.
Correct.
Of what we're gonna talk about.
Correct, that will need to have an action on it.
And we don't have to, we don't have to, we can make any motion that we determine.
Correct.
Okay, so basically.
Any individual board member who disperated, then they can, everyone who discusses, vote yes or no.
Yeah.
It does take some.
As long as the, the topic is specific.
Correct.
The only thing we talk about.
Yes.
And then we just come up with our.
Yes, and I mean, one of the advantages of that is if a specific topic creates two different things that need to be taken action on, that can occur. If we're talking about something and it's not in a motion, it creates a hiccup in the process. So I just think that we need to take back the responsibilities as trustees to truly discuss the items and create the motions. That's my personal thing. And to Debbie's thoughts, I, I do think as having a little cheat sheet that says, this is how you make a motion, is great. Because, I mean, I still am like, okay, what do I need to say? I think that's gonna be important for us to know.
And removing the words approve or deny.
Yeah.
Which is more back into actually Robert's rules and more of a parliamentary, because there's more than just approve or deny. And I think that's been the thing in the past, too, is that a motion can be anything. It can be postponed, it can be tabled, it can be debated. It can be amended, it can be approved, denied, you know, what, whatever. So I agree with, we need the discussion, but I do hear the same, is what they're saying, is that some still need a cheat sheet, what's the topic and what are we trying to accomplish?
Right, okay.
So that we have direction and then.
Right, yeah. And then so whoever happens to read it online, too, also knows, you know, like some of them are saying, here's the action items, you know, these are the things we're going to accept, reject, talk further at another meeting or what have you, and then just like they laid out there, which really sticks to what we, what we do in years.
So like on that act, one action item where it says, consider doing something? I think that's great, because then they're saying, you know, we need to look at this. Do we need to do something or do we not?
Consider is the word there.
Right.
Yes, that's, that's a great way of.
And they have a recommended action for the consideration, which would give you a movement toward your motion.
Yeah, I think that's great. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, I can move the motions, that's not.
Okay. Well, you're the most seasoned, so we're gonna lean on you.
I don't have a problem with the motion, but I, I get it, as long as we have a clear topic that we speak to.
Correct.
The public knows that's, you know, we still, I just, as long as the the agenda it's clearly spells out and then we stick to that.
Oh, exactly.
I, you know, that saves us a step if we want to change motion, we don't have to.
Right.
Do this and then amend this and it's probably easier on the clerk.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay. Okay, perfect. So we'll work on that for the next.
Glad to see the examples, because in my head, I'm trying to figure out.
Right.
What's the scale, what's like?
Well, and it just kind of hit me tonight, it's like, well, we do do that with the consent agenda. Because it's like, here's the consent agenda and then we can talk about it and we can decide what we're gonna do with it. And then we make the motion, so, okay. And then it was brought up at the last board meeting that we should consider doing something about, um, oh, wait, no, I'm going back up to the chairman responsibilities. I have received an email. I did respond to the email. The email was very generous and kind towards one of our staff members and, or one of our administration. So what I would think is appropriate is, I'd like to read it to you guys, what the person wrote and how I responded. Chrissy, is that acceptable? Okay. So the email came from Mrs. Betty J. Owen. She's one of our guest teachers. She stated, "My name is Betty J. Owen and I'm a former out-of-state retired teacher. I have been substitute teaching in the district since 2017. I enjoy working in your district elementary, junior, and senior high schools and interacting with the high caliber of staff that you have employed in your school district. As a guest teacher, I have interfaced with your school's office personnel, teachers, assistants, administrative, custodial, as well as the district resource officers. I have observed all of your staff demonstrate helpfulness, respect, support, and friendliness to parents, volunteers, and outside individuals like myself. I would like to state that it is a privilege and pleasure to work in all of your schools." Our principal, excuse me, one principal I would like to mention at this time, because I'm very impressed with his work, is Harrison Birch. Did I say that correctly? Birch, Vice Principal of Lakeland Junior High School. When I am a guest teacher at his school, he makes it a point to offer his assistants if I need anything. I see him greeting the students by name in the morning as they enter the school, and I observe him monitoring halls as well as interacting with students throughout the day. I have noticed him being respectful to his student body and vice versa. I spoke with a student from one of the classes I recently subbed in, and she felt he was a great principal who watched over the school inside during class time and outside during lunch break. She said he is strict but listens to the students and is very understanding. She repeated that Mr. Birch is a good principal. My purpose in mentioning this is because I know you have a Golden Apple Teacher Recognition Program, but I don't know if you have such a program for principals. If you do not have a program that recognizes principals, I would encourage you to consider Mr. Birch for such an award. Thank you again for allowing me to work in your district. Sincerely, Betty J. Owen."
How nice.
That was wonderful. So my response to her was, "Dear Ms. Owen, thank you for your email in being an honored representative of our district. Our district would fail into peril without the service and commitment of our guest teachers. You are one of our most valuable assets. I appreciate your kind words and praises for Mr. Birch. His commitment and dedication to our student, staff, and district are worthy of recognition. I will share your email and suggestions with the other board members. I am not clear on whether we have a program that recognizes the tireless devotion principals, administrative staff, and all the other committed individuals provide to create the incredible district we have, but I will find out. Again, thank you for the accolades for Mr. Birch and for reaching out to us." There we go. So on that note, do we have anything? We do, okay.
Passify and certified Teacher of the Year program.
Okay.
And it was the awards ceremony, they actually didn't have it last year. The Sexton's in charge of it.
Okay.
It doesn't really, we're obviously going to tour it for years before we got here, so I'll let her speak to it.
Yeah, that funnels up to the state, so our Teachers of the Year four each year, two one-one, Teacher of the Year two. At that state level.
Okay.
But we don't have anything regarding to that regular reasons for our principals.
Okay.
So if that's something.
Okay.
Wants to entertain, I'm certainly happy to work with you, there's something nice to do that in our Teacher of the Year celebration.
Well, I know at the last meeting, Trustee Grissom mentioned creating something that honors members of the district. And so I think that kind of, to me, when that came in, I thought, oh, it would have been a great opportunity because someone's, you know,
Right.
rising above what we see on a daily basis. So how do we want to go about, do we want to include the layout sort of, of that sort of program, or program seems like such a formal word, but you know, when you've got the employee of the week or the month or the, you know, whatever we want to do, but do we want to throw that in with the workshop we're having next week? Or how do we want to approach that?
Any ideas? Yeah, we, go ahead.
I would say we definitely, I think, would need a workshop or include it in the workshop. I think it is part of the vision and mission of this board to come up with something that, so yeah, maybe we can talk about it at the workshop and what that looks like and what's criteria and how do we find these people or, you know, obviously they're probably just start emailing us about them.
And that's okay.
Yeah.
I just, I wanted you folks to know this came in.
Yeah.
And what my response was to her, so.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That is.
Okay. Especially for somebody from the outside to come in and with so many years' experience and, you know, really recognize that.
Yeah, yeah, and she's, yeah, I'm just excited that we have her and so many in the pool because they're, I know they're desperately needed.
Well, let's kind of touch on that in our next, in our next workshop.
Okay. Sounds great. And then the last thing was, board member, technology equipment for discussion. I for one. I don't like this. I don't say that too loud, it's too small. I have vision issues, an immaculate hole, I mean, it's just looking through my eyes is quite fun. And the smaller the screen, the worse and the harder it is for me. Now, I would like to see us, especially with some of the things we I help with, like on the policy committee, to have like a normal laptop computer.
I think that you do a lot of stuff with the committees and things like that, and I don't. So I'm okay just keeping this small, but I certainly do see the need for people who are more active than I am.
Have older eyes.
Well, and you do a lot, you and, and Trustee Grissom do a lot of, you know, with all of that.
Yes.
Policy changes and all that that I don't do. You know, I, I use this, you know, to check my email and bring to board meetings and things like that. But you guys use them a whole lot and it's hard to type. It is. I had to use it as much as you. I would be feeling the same way.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I would support, you know, you guys upgrade. I, I, I love the size.
Rude. Okay.
Chairman Thompson, I'm very happy to get whatever people want and we can make whatever people want. Um, if you could just let me know, just to put it in the context and, you know, Miss Irons. I was gonna say Chairman Irons, Vice Chairman Ryan, I knew it was in front of me. So, um, he was on the board and there were still paper agendas and I'm like, push, 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 push. And I was like, we cannot, we do not need this. Yeah, so. So we, we really did like sort of do a little push that I was like, we're not gonna have paper. It took a year to get this to happen. Um, and then we got to these and then showing what students were using. So I think it is good that you guys felt like if students use them a lot, a lot of parents will buy them their own device because they are a little bit clunky, but some of the kids hold it like a book and they use it just with touch screens. So, um, but we are happy to purchase whatever if any of the board, you, you could just email me, uh, link to what you want. I would get it ordered for you, Ace.
Okay.
We started on, well, I started on iPad, so.
It would be all right if it translated, but it's so proprietary that it translates to nothing but Google. So anything in your brain, but muscle memory or shortcut keys or what have you. I'm constantly losing things and highlighting things and I'm like, oh, I forgot that doesn't happen on this keyboard.
Here, since you don't get paid and you volunteer a lot of time, we're happy to purchase whatever laptops, whatever technology you need to be.
But I haven't used it for three years, not certain.
When I saw your last email, I'm like, I really want this to be on the agenda.
Well, the two thousand page preamble that I, when I read the first six hundred and some odd pages of it and I lost it three times and I was like, I'm getting it.
And that's when the frustration was like, yeah. Just if you could just email to me whoever wants, then just I will take care of it.
Okay. Um, when would you like us to get that information to you?
In the next couple of days.
Okay.
Great. You just, then we won't lose sight of it. I'll put it in, do a budget deal request and
Okay.
Take it out of my budget and we're good to go.
All right. So I believe that's it for the discussion items. Oh, yeah, they're just okay, nevermind. Now we're gonna move on to the action items. Uh, to where we can take action to approve, deny, amend, modify or postpone any action, postpone action on any of the items listed below. Uh, the first item of business is, uh, to approve or deny to amend the board meeting agenda to add items L and M to enter into executive session per Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one B. So we do need to, uh, we, we need to enter back into executive session to address some personnel business. But it is not on the agenda to do so. So I would need a motion to do that if we are in agreement to amend the agenda.
And are we amending to leave it in the order in which it is or are we amending and moving directly into an executive session?
No, we would be amending and going into executive session when, at the end.
Okay, right. Well, I'll move that we amend the agenda to add items L and M to enter into the executive session for Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one B.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second, uh, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, we need to either approve or deny to update the LJSD two seven two Fall reopen plan.
I'll move to approve the update to the, uh, Fall reopen plan as presented.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion, second, uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we need to approve or deny to appoint Chelsea personally as clerk of the Board of Trustees.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointing of Chelsea personally as clerk of the Board of Trustees.
Having a motion and a second, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, we need to approve or deny the administration's recommendation of Chelsea personally as District Custodian of Public Records.
So any? Approve administration's recommendation of Chelsea personally as District Custodian of Public Records.
I'll second that.
Having a motion and a second, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we need to approve or deny, approve or deny the administration's recommendation of Chrissy Williams as acting clerk of the Board of Trustees in the absence of clerk of the board.
I'll move to approve the, uh, recommendation of the administration for Chrissy Williams as acting clerk of the board in the absence of clerk of the board.
Second motion.
Having a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, um, we now have uh, to approve or deny the updates to Policy fifty-seven forty Reduction in Force. Would we like to have any discussion on the revised Reduction in Force policy or the updated Reduction in Force policy? This, uh, policy was presented to, uh, the district's legal counsel who did make recommendations for changes.
So Chairman Thompson, if I could just, we had just to put it in context, we had the RIF policy was years and years outdated. There was some work done before I got here, then we started some work. And we showed the board, we decided there was some updates needed, met a deal with the association, knuckled some new protocol. And then we had that feedback from the board that the procedure piece should be pulled out of the policy, put into a procedure. Hence, we had the P. And then we had a version that went to the board. Hence, we had like three or four first readings. Hence, why it's on the secondary. And then we had the district's attorney read through it. We took all of her recommendations, um, except for one clarification we had with the certified staff saying it's category, the three groups that get fooled are the category A. I mean, the category two, I looked at the A, my A, you know, category twos, category threes. And then all other employees that have scored an overall basis. So those are the three groups. We just did a little bit better clarifying of that, um, right here. But she's approved all these changes, so we're, um, good to go. And you can see highlighted in green and then struck out, struck the other things coming out. This is, uh, the Sexton put in exact list from state Idaho code in there.
Perfect.
Um, we wanted it to be real clear. And then down here, the one thing that we did, she may have the decision, wanted to go, if there was an appeal on whether this had been scored appropriately, we're, um, to go to the superintendent and board and not giving that to the board. So that's what that last one she said we do. I mean, mainly because I'm sitting in this committee ahead. There's appeal, it goes decision, the board will do. And if we wanna change sudden calendar days, we want it to be a pretty quick turnaround because having lived this, through this before, um, you, you really don't have a lot of time if you want to turn or an appeal of this whole rubric and they don't agree with it. We, we did employees will have seven calendar days from the original notification date and submit it to the Board of Trustees.
Um, one thing that I recall reading on the modifications, item seven that got stricken. Um, I believe it was, um, the attorney's recommendation to move that to the actual policy, cause this is procedure.
I, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think she thinks it needs to just be something that we do and it's not supposed to be a policy. But I can certainly read that and ask her. We don't have the policy, so I'll have to bring it back to you next meeting if that is impactful to what it is to do.
Okay, um, the only the only thing that I, I took out of what, the way I interpreted what she was stating is it is wise to let your special, especially the certified employees know they're responsible for reviewing their personal, personnel files to make sure everything is correct and up to date. So when that's put in the policy that we've recommended that you do that, then in a sense, they've been given the notice that you need to do this and it is their responsibility.
Because that makes a lot of sense. I, I'll re-read the thing and then if it's supposed to go there, we'll bring that, we'll just bring that back to the board.
Okay.
Um, I think there is also another personnel, um, file policy that is also appropriate.
Okay.
Will be placed and also the HR director is going to do it on an annual basis. And she put it in the calendar before school starts, it's gonna be an annual reminder.
Okay. Oh, and I do believe maybe not, um, because we don't uh, the, a RIF policy for classified employees, we're going to look into that.
Yep. So we have that on our to-do list, but we're gonna do some research. And we haven't ever had that in the history of my opinion, but it certainly made sense after she said that. So we're gonna see if ISBA has a model policy and then, um, we'll come forward with that to the policy committee.
Okay.
Are you going through the policy committee or is already ISB model policy, should it's been approved?
Um, I would think, eh, well, because you had mentioned getting a C I D.
CDI.
CDI team, uh, together. Yes, getting their input. So I think if, um, there was input provided to the policy team to make sure that the policy met and then it came to the board, I think that would be the appropriate action.
Yeah, I think it would be, we would hope that a few members represented some CDI team could meet with the policy committee. I think that would be.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think that would be really good.
Yeah.
So that, I just wanted to give you kind of a little bit of, after not answering the questions that people asked.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions, thoughts, inputs?
No.
Okay. So that being said, would someone like to make a motion to approve or deny the update to Policy fifty-seven forty Reduction in Force?
For the procedure and the policy or are we?
For the procedure and the policy.
Okay, I'll, I'll move to approve the update to Policy fifty-seven forty for the reduction enforcement was presented.
I'll second that.
Having a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, the next action is to approve or deny Policy thirty-two eighty-five Sexual Harassment Discrimination and Retaliation Title Nine. And it's open for discussion.
Um, I think we, I know we keep bringing this back and forth, but with everything that I shared with everybody, the training and the documentation, they have some more to sit through. We need to change who some of this team is. I think it would be behoove us to, uh, understand a little bit more the district and staff and the board, um, the changes to, uh, Title Nine. I don't think, um, based upon training and input I got from the trainers, of Title Nine who are also legal counsel themselves, that, um, the district, uh, the clerk of the board should not be the coordinator because Title Nine really lives and breeds within the district. And the clerk of the board is the one who number one decides whether a formal complaint will or won't be made. Um, and they're also the keeper of, we'll say, the process from the beginning to the end. So they will, they're, they're, the, uh, clerk or the coordinator, I'm sorry, really is the one who takes care of the whole process to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. And it was a recommendation and I did attach to the one, uh, I sent Chrissy all the updated information. And their suggestion, of course, we can go through this, the, the trainers who are also legal counsel themselves. They prefer or thought it was better, number one, that the board should have nothing to do with the process other than appeals. That's it. Um, that, uh, the coordinator should be somebody that is at, they call them central office or district office. And then from there, uh, you know, assistant principals possibly or the principal as investigators, you know. None of this is written in, so this is just how, what they typically do. And then they went down the line. Obviously, the, uh, decision maker being, um, somebody again who's a high level position or the district office. And I think a lot of those people, we've already named quite well in those roles. We have Dr. Meyer and all that. And I, I believe also when we get into assigning deputy, you know, from a policy perspective and Title Nine, when we get into assigning, uh, deputy coordinators, which are fine to have, and we should have at least one deputy coordinator along with that coordinator. Because for instance, if we put hypothetically, um, either way, if we put, uh, Brooke as, uh, the Title Nine Coordinator and Ms. Sexton is a deputy or vice versa. If it's an employee issue, obviously the HR person, um, would step away from the investigation because her job would be, she deals with employees day in and day out, right? So there could be, um, some conflict of interest there and some other things. So, um, I think we need to maybe bring just this policy, uh, back to the policy committee so we can get a little bit better understanding. Uh, Title Nine has really, really changed. It's almost like a brand new beast. And I just wanna make sure that we, we get it right. I think in the meantime that we can establish a webpage. I think a lot of that's already done in the procedure and in the policy that we could take that information
Right.
and at least create the webpage that says, hey, here's how you can do it.
A flowchart piece.
Uh, well, this, we have to name who, how, you know, who's in charge of what, how do they report all pretty much everything that was already laid out in the policy with maybe interchanging some names. Um, and then there's some more training I was gonna set through. The other thing is, is it's just a whole nother discussion. Yeah, every employee's supposed to be changed because they're definite or, or trained because the definition under Title Nine of the responsible party or responsible employee now extends to everybody. Even though there are people in these roles that are in charge of following the procedure, it's almost like everybody plays a piece and there's, there's just a lot of responsibility. And we wanna make sure that the district's covered in how we, um, apply it. So I would like to bring the Title Nine piece back, um, along with whatever else I've learned and whoever else might wanna join us. And then, uh, I'll, I'll try and keep sharing. We are, the district does have, uh, the training through the state. Um, some of it's free, some of it's like sixty dollars a class. And then I really enjoyed and I learned about these guys from ISBA to the state to strain was ICS. They've been really good and very open communication through email and I've, I've been very grateful, thankful for them.
And first, HR rep for Cunningham is still in the middle. She would have been going to take the Title Nine, so she She had been going and taking Title Nine, so she has been continuing that. She's still not completed with that, so I think she'll be happy that we're waiting on this piece of it.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Creditage, write the credit to me.
Yeah, yeah, good. Um, so that would be my recommendation to the board is to bring the uh, policy thirty two eighty five uh, back to the policy committee by itself. Um, let's thoroughly go over it and make sure that we have all the team players in the roles um, named.
Okay.
And then uh, bring the policy back and and accept accepted that.
Okay.
At that time.
Thank you for paying attention to all this and the level of detail you're going into.
Yeah, well, and I became, as I sat through the training, um, just for my own knowledge, even as a trustee, I really don't participate except for in the appellate level. But I I thought it prudent to protect the district and make sure that we're doing the right thing, that I even paid for training for myself to attend these four weeks in a row because um, there's just a lot of things that have changed and and everybody, there was over five hundred participants in the meeting today in the year in review. And they're all, you know, veterans of the day and even they're asking questions and well, what about this? No, not that and
That's amazing.
Yeah. So you're awesome.
Yes.
Chairman Johnson, number one is we, you volunteer, I want to reiterate again. Um, we have a budget professional development that we will pay for that. So if you have a, you shouldn't be paying, the board should not be paying for things out of your pocket because again, you're volunteering your time and we will face with that. So if you're getting invoicing for that, please, um, I appreciate everything you've done. Uh, especially since you have the interest and then you're good at it. The other thing I want to keep in mind, um, and I will follow through with Christine Chelsea is we have some by law, we have some things as a district we must do annually with the staffs. So site awareness, we do our QPR every three years, we have bullying harassment by law. We have the code of ethics, so this Title Nine will get right in.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm simply telling you that because I want to make sure that we have it all. Instead of being in like these four different policies, it would be nice to say annually, we will do remind employees about these things.
Perfect.
Um, so I just want to write, we're writing that down because I think that'd be helpful for the employees as well, but that would fit right into that.
Yep, and that that is exactly what they brought up too, is one way to reminding with your, you know, the mandatory reporting training you have to do and all. We just sort of melded all in there together. And I know the state, you probably know more, um, Mr. Baker is a top standard. They're a community member with this ICS. So being a community member, there's a lot of availability for no cost to the district too, so.
Excellent. Um, Chrissy, where are we at on just even getting a teaser page up on our website? Is it? Okay, perfect.
Yeah, you can click on the uh, district tab, it'll be there.
Okay. So my uh.
So should we just make a motion to table this?
Yeah, we'll make a motion to table it until uh. Yeah.
Policy.
Yeah, yeah.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, so we um, earlier had discussion on adjusting the board meeting times. Um, so and I believe the consensus was that we would start the actual meeting at five, moving the executive session to prior to the start of the board meeting. So we have a uh, we need to make a motion to approve or deny board meeting start time modification for the calendar year twenty twenty one. Um, for the fact that we did approve the start times at last board meeting um, for six o'clock.
And.
Go ahead, no. Chit chat.
What basically would be discussed?
Yes, please.
Need to approve the board meeting start time modification for the year twenty twenty one to reflect a five o'clock start time. Executive session will be held.
Okay.
One second, Pat.
Oh.
Before we finalize, I mean, you say the game with the February and then say the exact date since we're we're actually partying to.
Oh, okay.
I just think for the public, if they're just watching this later.
No reason.
It would be for February eleventh, board meeting.
Okay.
So need to approve board meeting start time modification for the year twenty twenty one starting February eleventh evening to start the regular scheduled board meeting at five.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, with the executive sessions coming up at four o'clock.
Okay. All right, having a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, we now have uh, to approve or deny the alternate authorization for employee zero one point two eight point two zero two one A. There is an attachment, um, would we'd like to have any discussion on this?
I know in the in the attachment, it states that the district has had some um, discussion with the state regarding this because my question is, um, of all, you know, most, most uh, alternate authorizations are fine except for when it comes to uh, special ed. So, um, I guess that was my question as to, you know, whether it's an idea on regulation or the state.
It's actually with regarding IC, that's the up code and how we get funded.
Uh huh.
Um, so initially, we thought it could go around at the interim and then on to uh, SWB director. But the way they've done it and particularly worked spent a lot of time in certifications that alternate route, you know, I mean, that she's going to be done. She's already into a program, she's already almost into the program, she's doing her hours now that she would be ready to get full funding for her in that position this year. So this was their recommendation. Based on, it's really a funding issue.
Oh, okay, all right. Um, yeah, so did we ever run and add an opening for that position or?
No, because it's an interim. So how we've done interpretation in the past, if somebody's in there at um, as an interim, they're qualified. I make a determination that it's a immediate need for somebody to be built, we've done, I think we've done three more in the last five years, I've done three times. So it's not like it happens a lot. Um, but all three have been leadership positions. And otherwise, teaching positions that we've had, they have been, instead of being an interim position, they have been alternate route or to fill positions, sometimes long term, if teachers stay in a position, you can't get it filled. But in at least three admin positions, um, and it the they, in fact, she's coming next board meeting midway through the year so that the board can check in, ask how it's going, talk about that. The board is involved in looking, making sure the evaluation is good, person is suitable. And then if they are, then they are continued in a position, if not, and you know, the board desires to open it up, then they can open it up and take out the person that you know, person to be free to apply. So far in the prior two, the people have been absolutely phenomenal and the board, we've come into a set session before to talk to them and the board is step, or definitely those people stayed prior to position.
So this is just a, this is just a sort of a jog from the interim that we're already doing anyways because we're like in the middle of the year now and all that kind of stuff.
In fact, um, can we get um, HR Director Cunningham on because she's on the floor, I don't want to speak for her.
Okay.
But I do know this is a funding issue, it's not a certification issue, it's a funding issue is what she said.
Okay.
And so that's why this is the part, but I'd rather have her.
Sure.
So I will just.
And you go on microphone.
Brooke, can you hear us?
I can, um, yeah, this is definitely a funding issue. Um, it was just trying to find a category uh, to place her. This is, this is what she's doing is mostly, I mean, it it is um, special education. And so um, in order for us to get that funding and she's in a program, we just, we had to do this all off or else we weren't going to get funding for her.
Hmm. Okay, I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily have, I guess I'm confused because the federal regulation and the state regulation, I mean, in big bulk, it explicitly says alternate routes can be used except for this, anything to do with special ed.
Well, and and that, no, that's that's not entirely accurate.
Okay.
So um, as long as she's, she is in a program, she can do that. She is in the program to become a special ed director.
Okay.
So we're able to use that all off in this, in this um, instance. And the state highly recommended that we did that.
Oh, okay. So we did, so the state is aware of what we're doing in and there, this was their recommendation to do it, we have that documented?
Yep, absolutely, in emails. Um, I have a CC'd several of our administrators in the district on this.
Okay. So Brooke, are we receiving funds for her through the state for her position or are we receiving funding for her through her position as an intern?
It would be for this position and so, um.
What position?
As an SWD director. So that's why we have to have the all off though, otherwise we wouldn't receive funds for her at all.
Okay.
It's part of the salary based apportionment.
Okay.
Um, formula.
Okay. So we put her in this position without knowing how we were going to be paid for her?
She does have an administrator, an administrator endorsement and she also has, um, it is, what is the, what is that? Yeah. And.
Sorry, Brooke, go ahead.
And so anyways, um, under the administrator endorsement, um, she would have been able to take on anything that had to do with federal programs.
Okay.
However, we did identify her, she as an interim special ed director. She's been corresponding as the interim special ed director. She is in the program. So in 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 order to, you know, just be on the up and up on what she's doing, this was the best route to go.
Okay.
Just to clarify, because I don't want you to think that Brooke did not have all of her ducks in a row. Is when we went to the beginning, I don't, I think everyone remembers what happened quite quickly.
Right.
Right before school started and this is, if any district's getting legal trouble, this is where you get legal trouble by any means. So it's very important to have somebody that really understands the laws and compliance. She was the only person in the entire district that has had, working on the screen. Um, not to say there wouldn't have been somebody else in the country, but at that late age. Um, but Brooke did look and the principal K twelve endorsement,
Mm hmm.
really they had told her that would count.
Okay.
But then when she went through the IC, which is the salary grade, that's how we get funding through the IC and chat.
Okay.
And 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 she'll go, who's in SWB helps chat and they have to, there's a theory particular that they have that that came back as an error, Brooke had to do some follow up. Then she found out what they know and won't be, she's in this program and she's rated as an interim. So this is just to get funding in the SBA salary based proportion.
Okay.
That's that funding, there's an expressionary fund pieces we talked about, right? Then the other piece, Brian talks about the salary based portion.
Okay.
So it really is not any sort of way to like, we're not trying to give anybody anything they don't deserve, we just really need the funding for a position that we thought we.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and I don't have any problem with that. I just, when I looked at it and I knew from some other stuff I was reading, this stuck out in my head because it says that they have not had certification or license or requirements waived on an emergency temporary or provisional basis and, and then it gives some other things. And then right on the front of the the uh, Department of Education, State's Department of Education in the big red rectangle, it says, important, emergency provisional, bold letters, cannot be used for special education per ID.
Right, and this is not, this is not emergency provision.
Okay.
This is alter alternate authorization, which is different than the emergency provisional.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that we're all, you know.
We've only brought you one emergency provisional, am I wrong, Brooke? One emergency, I rarely do that.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody, I just want to need to understand it for my own self that her, you know, that's it. Okay, I'm good, I'm fine with that. And this is uh, yeah, I mean, I know she's been functioning in the role, we're almost done with school, so.
Well, we're just gonna have to wait.
Yeah.
Well, the days are getting longer, right? They're getting more sunshine and like, summer's coming.
Okay. So I will uh, move to approve the alternate authorization for employee zero one two eight twenty twenty dash eight.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. That concludes the regular. Oh, no, wait, wait, that includes the regular thingy. Oh, do we have board member input for future agenda items? Maybe. Ours written down, down about the workshops and what's going to be in the workshop.
Maybe not. Maybe not.
Anybody have any thoughts or suggestions for input for future agendas? Not today. Not today. Okay. Moving on. Uh, we need to we can take actions to approve, deny, amend, modify or postpone action items. Action on any of the items listed below. Uh, we need to approve or deny to enter into executive session for Idaho code seventy four two oh one, excuse me, seventy four two oh six one B. No decisions, actions will be made during executive session. This is only a motion to enter into executive session.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session for Idaho code seven four two zero six one B. One second, Pat.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor, we need to do a rule call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Chris.
Yes. Okay, do I have to gather all the things?